All right, good evening. This is the Eastline Board of Selectmen's Regular Meeting of March 5th, 2025. We're in the Eastline Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. We've just concluded the special town meeting and now it's about seven, 17. We've already recited the Pledge of Allegiance, so we will move on to additional agenda and consent calendar items. Do we have any additional agenda items?
I'll move to add Agenda Item 2I to appoint Betsy Getch to the Historic Properties Commission.
All right, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then we have, do we have any additional budget, I mean, agenda items?
I move to add Agenda Item Number 2J for Budget Deliverations.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The non-motion carries. All right. Okay, so. Are there any public delegations that wish to address the Board of Selectmen this evening? I'm sorry?
Were you going to move up the assess, the depreciation schedule so the assessor could get out of here? Number F?
Oh, okay, do we want to, all right, sure. Do we want to do that before delegations or do we?
I was, I just thought you were, I didn't know if you had a vote in the beginning to move it up.
Maybe do another new business, put it as A maybe?
Yeah, let's, so.
There is no A.
Yeah, I know.
Well, if we could, if we could, could I hear a motion to make Item F, Item A?
Sure, I'll move to move discussion and possible action, adopt new motor vehicle depreci- depreciation schedule from Item F to Item A.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kevin, for reminding me of that, appreciate it. I get a lot of help up here, it's a good thing. All right, now we'll move on to public delegations. Is there anyone that would like to address the Board of Selectmen this evening?
Hi, Glenn.
Okay.
Hello, everyone, my name is Marjorie Mekoff. I live at Six Cedar Ridge Road, Eastlime. I've lived here since 1979 and I'm here tonight representing Pollinator Pathway, Eastlime, Inc., which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, resource for Eastlime Town. And I was asked to submit the spreadsheet for the 25-year budget, which I did. And I'm here because I want to explain why I requested the amount that I did. But first, let me just briefly say that what we do, we're not gardeners. We don't plant geraniums or zinnias. We remove invasive plant species, particularly the ones that are prohibited by our Environmental Committee in Hartford, which is advised by SIPWIG, which is short for Connecticut Invasive Plant Working Group. We work with them, we categorize and fill out a schedule. Whenever we remove invasive plants from Eastlime, we have to give them the data, the amount of time, the type of plant. They take that information from all of the groups like ours, all over the state, and that data gives them a look to see what plants, non-natives, ones that come from Europe and Asia, the invasive qualification, which our state legislature then bans for sale and use in the state. So I won't get in, I'm, I'm working on another project on the library parking lot, but I'm not here to talk about that tonight because I want to focus more on the budget. But I'd like to show you this photograph of the area that Public Works did a tremendous job this past winter. They went with heavy equipment. This is the community center, this building. They spent a very short period of time removing everything that was there. We had multiple rows of Japanese honeysuckle, Oriental bittersweet. We had Russian olive trees. My group inherited part of this space. We inherited this space right behind the senior center. So here's the senior center wing. The garden club, about 35 years ago when this building was constructed, had a garden that they maintained from the back wing of the senior center to the back wall of the library, all the way to the stairs leading up to Brookside. We partnered with Anna and our group of volunteers, you're looking at us, plus we have one man and two other women, were manually trying to remove these invasive plants. Now, why were we doing that? I mean, we could have been sitting around the pool drinking martinis, but we are dedicated to preserving the environment in Eastlime. Not for today and not for next year and not for 10 years from now, but from 20 years from now, if we don't remove the Tree of Heaven and all the other things that I'm talking about, we will not have native plants to pollinate our food supply. We have a two-acre meadow next to the Giving Garden. Everyone knows of the Giving Garden. You can't see our two-acre meadow from the road, it's behind the Giving Garden crops. That meadow brings in the insects that produces the food and the birds to eat the insects that they don't want eating the food crops in the Giving Garden. So this is just basic science. So I have come out with a formula, just very quickly. This area that Public Works did a tremendous job, it's this black line, I'm sorry I don't have more copies, but my printer was running out of ink. So this total square amount is 28,572 and 43 square feet. Now, we're considering Phase 1, which is the original garden club of Eastlime, which is now defunct, and they gave us this to maintain. They asked us and we said, of course, because it was a rep. And we just want a budget for that. Now, I requested $3,000, which does, it seems like a lot after talking about, you know, special needs and mental health issues. We're concerned about that too, but we're also concerned about the health of our town in 50 years. So we broke it down to Phase 1 and 4. Buying plugs wholesale, three-inch pots, $3.50 each. 12 inches on the center for 400, 4,520 square feet, times 350 would be $16,000 just to do this part. That's a lot of money, so I didn't want to ask you for that amount. Instead, I asked you for 3. We're also writing grants and we hope to get a grant to give us the rest of this money. So to just do plugs and take here would be $16,000. Instead, we're going to do grass seed. We know invasives are going to be coming up, so we're going to be monitoring that. So in the long run, just in Phase 1, and I'm telling you the $16,000 so that you know that wholesale, that sounds like a lot, but we want to preserve this space. Phase 2 will be here and then working with Public Works, Justin Porter and Joe Grabah, will decide what we want to do over here. Maybe they have ideas for over there. So, and our labor is free, so, and we get our plants wholesale. So we're trying our very best to keep the town invasive-free so we can plant native species for biodiversity. And I know you understand what I'm saying. It's basic science. It's the basis of the food chain. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
I'm sorry you take too much of your time. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thanks for all the hard work you do.
Oh, okay, thanks.
All right, anyone else that wishes to address the Board of Selectmen? If there are none, then we will move on to approval of the minutes.
Did you check Zoom to see?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone on Zoom that wants to address the board?
Should we be reading that out loud?
Yeah.
I think we should.
All right. All right, I think I can see it. All right. I can't read the name, but it says Claire something. Hi, this is Shoreline Soup Kitchens and Pantries. Residents of the Town of Eastlime continue to rely on SSKP to put food on the table. During 2023, we registered 583 residents of Eastlime at one of our food pantries. We are requesting $500 to be used to purchase fresh and non-perishable food to be distributed to needy residents through our local pantries and meal sites. All funds will be used exclusively to purchase food. This funding would help needy Town of Eastlime residents feed their family during the coming year by providing food free of charge. Each household could reallocate financial resources to other critical needs such as utilities, shelter, medical care, and transportation. I just didn't get the name. I don't know if somebody can read the name that.
Claire Belleju.
Okay, Claire Belleju then, all right. All right, and, yeah, I think there's more. I don't know, is there more? All right, that's the same one. Was there anything else or was that it?
That's a new one.
That's a new one, okay. It's the same person, Claire Belleju. The residents we serve represent the working poor, the elderly, those coping with illness or disability, and families with young children. Currently, 38% of our guests belong to a family of four or more. 29% of guests are infants, children, or teens. 19% are seniors and 24% are living alone.
And which entity was this, that there were?
Who does she represent?
Shoreline Soup Kitchens and Pantries.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, James.
Okay. Unless there are any other messages, we will move on to approval of the minutes. The first is regular meeting of February 19th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 19th, 2025 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Here we second, okay. Any discussion or changes, modifications? Being none, those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Being none, motion carries. The next is the Special Budget Meeting of February 3rd, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the Special Budget Meeting Minutes of February 3rd, 2025 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. The next is the Special Budget Meeting of February 5th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the Special Budget Meeting Minutes of February 5th, 2025 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Being none, all in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. Next is the Special Budget Meeting of February 10th, 2025.
Move to approve the Special Budget Meeting Minutes of February 10th, 2025 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion? Changes? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. Finally, Special Budget Meeting of February 24th, 2025.
Move to approve the Special Budget Meeting Minutes of February 24th, 2025 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Being none, motion carries. All right. Next on our agenda this evening is the Consent Calendar.
Move to approve the Consent Calendar for March 5th, 2025 in the amount of $21,413.57.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a second. All right, we have the Consent Calendar. Yeah, well, someone, I guess they paid their property taxes twice, so that happens sometimes. All right. If there's no further discussion, those in favor of approving the Consent Calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Being none, motion carries. All right.
2F, 2A.
Yeah, so now we're going to move to the new 2A, which was the old 2F, which is a discussion and possible action to adopt new motor vehicle depreciation schedule. We have our assessor here tonight. Hi, Dan, thank you for being here.
Hi, good evening. I'm here as a result of the new law that was passed. The way we change motor, price motor vehicles changed drastically. We went from using market value to using an MSRP plus a depreciation schedule. The result of that was a decrease in our motor vehicle grand list of 11.57%, or over $23 million assessed. That, that law also made a number of trailers non-taxable. So the governor just signed a bill on Monday afternoon, House Bill 7067, which would enable municipalities to adopt a local option, changing the depreciation schedule to start at 90% as opposed to 85%, and it would add 5% every step down the schedule. Adopting this change would impact our motor vehicle list, but also we do have some vehicles on our personal property list. This schedule, adopting this new depreciation schedule, they would allow us to do it effective on the 10-124 grand list year, which would be billable this July. So the adoption of this local option, like I said, allows us to have it be effective for this 10-124 grand list year, billable in July. To adopt the modified schedule, the Board of Selectmen must vote in favor of it and notify OPM within 14 days. The current law requires the grand list to be filed by January 31st annually. The new local option would authorize us to adjust and republish the grand list by April 15th, 2025. So we'd be reopening our grand list and making these adjustments, and then we can notify OPM of our adjusted values as of April 15th. And it would allow any aggrieved parties, anybody who felt that they were aggrieved by the assessor's actions, to file an appeal by April 2nd. We would then finalize our grand list numbers on June 1st. So anybody who would be, want to go before the Board of Assessment Appeals, they would start their, they would have to file an appeal by April 2nd, and then the hearings would start April 17th. This new bill, however, would only impact about 75 vehicles on personal property in terms of the new Board of Assessment Appeal Schedule. So most motor vehicles, their tax bill is their first notice. So they have not received an assessment notice yet. They receive their notice with their July tax bill, and they, under the normal course of business, have the opportunity to come before the Board of Assessment Appeals in September. So that doesn't change. That's the, that's the bulk of it, you know, the motor vehicle list. And it only, the opening up the Board of Assessment Appeals, really, the only people that it, it should impact would be the 75 vehicles that are on the personal property list. They have already received an assessment notice. They would receive another assessment notice, an amended assessment notice, with their right to appeal. Their right to appeal, however, because motor vehicles are no longer based on market value, would not be because of high mileage or condition. It really limits what people can come to the Board of Assessment for because we're not using market value. You know, they, it would have to be that the MSRP was wrong or the depreciation of the, was wrong, the age of the vehicle was wrong, something of that sort. These new numbers, and in your packet, I included some charts for you. And so it shows that by adopting this new depreciation schedule, the loss in our motor vehicle grand list would go, instead of being 11.57%, that loss would drop down to 2.51%. So the motor vehicle grand list would increase from 179 million to 198 million. It, it really, you know, it was very hard this year with such a large loss. The state recognizing that, you know, gives, is giving the municipalities the option to adopt this depreciation schedule. And so our grand list would go, instead of increasing .029% over last year, it would increase .65%. And you also have that depreciation schedule. So I did look at a sampling, just a small sampling of 10, 10 motor vehicles, and compared their 23, their 24, and this new depreciation schedule. There still, the average savings was 17%. The actual taxpayer was, their motor vehicle bill was still 17% lower than it was. You know, adopting this, this schedule really would help mitigate the losses that that new legislation impacted. Do you have any questions?
You know, it's a very, it's, it's a, it's a complex thing to understand. You've done a great job of explaining it, and I know you and I have sat down in more detail and, and so it helped me understand it. But I guess to try to boil it down, we took a pretty big hit with the new way that they're interpreting the grand list for motor vehicles. And this, this moderates that somewhat, make it a little easier for the town.
Yes, absolutely.
And still saves the taxpayers money.
It still saves, yes, exactly, most taxpayers. I mean, there's a few instances where the values actually went up, but very few. For the most part, they, they went down significantly, and that's why that number went down so drastically. You know, when, when the bill was originally introduced, it was supposed to start at the 90% depreciation. And by dropping it down, you know, it, it just really had a significant impact. So they, they did correct it by giving us this option. It's a pretty rare thing for us to open up the grand list. I don't know if it ever happening.
Thank you. Any, any questions?
With the adoption of this, this reduces our mil rate in the budget by almost a quarter of, a quarter of a mil.
Wow.
So it went from about 2.9 to 2.6 and change.
Pretty significant. And you know, we've taken a number of hits this year with legislation. It's really been very hard for the town. All right, do I hear a, pardon me?
I said, "thank you," Tara.
Okay, any additional comments or discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Move to adopt the Modified Motor Vehicle Deprec- Depreciation Schedule for the October 1st, 2024 grand list as presented by the assessor.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Being none, motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Don't feel you have to leave.
We have to stay.
Yeah, we get to stay. Okay, next is the Discussion and Possible Action on Twin Valley Subdivision. And there are two components to it. First is the conveyance of open space, and then they'll be followed by acceptance of a conservation easement. So let's see.
What is the corrected version going around? The paperclip is given to us.
The one I handed you, not the one in your packet, the one I handed you tonight is the correct one.
Do I have, what's the one in my book? Mine is correct? Okay. So I don't know if there's anyone that wants to address this, well, we can just talk about it.
I think Gary Gashell.
Oh, Gary's, oh, good.
Any questions to the Board they have available?
Thank you, Gary. So can you, are you able to explain briefly what this is?
Certainly, yeah. Per the Twin Valley subdivision, there was two parcels of land known as Open Space A, approximately 20.559 acres, and Open Space B, approximately 47.28 acres, which were required to be dedicated as open space. So pursuant to the subdivision regulations, the Planning Commission had forward a favorable recommendation to this board to accept that as open space. With that said, the current developer has posted a bond. I believe that's in your packet in the approximate amount of, I think it was 1.8 million, somewhere in that range. I don't have that particular number right in front of me. We're ready to accept it. They're currently clearing for the road. I suspect that the road will be completed probably somewhere around September, in that range. The developer's a pretty large developer, looking to do roughly 500 homes this year. I think they did 300 homes last year. So I anticipate the road being done fairly quickly, and I would anticipate they'll be back with another request for the town to accept that road, but there's a whole nother process there. Being that the open space is currently available and the town can take title to it, I would recommend that we do so.
And there is a map as part of the packet, if anyone in the back, you can sort of see where this is, if you know where Spring Rock Road is. There's two parcels, one B, and then the other one down here is A. So there's two parcels.
I'll also note, there's a 25, I'm sorry, there's also a conservation easement, roughly 25 feet, that goes along the perimeter of the lots that the town will also be responsible for. As far as being the stewards of that easement, ensuring that the conservation restrictions are upheld.
So the first step would be, do I hear a motion on acceptance of the conveyance of the open space?
So can I just ask a question first? So basically, on this property, the open space, there would be no development. Is that correct then?
Correct.
And that would be in perpetuity?
Correct. You'll see there's roughly five conditions there. There is access by motorized vehicles from abutting land of the Sportsman's Club over the uplands only for retrieval of a wounded animal, which may wander onto the open space. Obviously, I believe also for emergency access and vehicles, should someone get hurt out there or first responders need to respond, they can use the appropriate equipment. Agricultural use of the land in such locations as is suitable could be had, but I don't believe the land really is favorable for agricultural use. It's highly wooded, wetlands dominates the larger portion.
So did you say 300 homes?
The, the developer that's in there now?
Yes.
They built 300 homes last year, somewhere in the state of Connecticut.
Oh, I thought you said.
Right, so they're a large developer, they can handle, they're not, no. The subdivision itself was only 20 homes, that was, that was approved. Sorry.
And so did we get, in exchange for the open space, did we make any exceptions or modifications in exchange for that?
As far as changes to the subdivision plan layout as a result?
Well, in other words, we don't very often get something for free. So I want to know if there was a trade-off of some kind in perhaps adjusting regulations or lot size or something?
So the, the application initially was applied for under the Conservation Development Design Regulations, which would allow ultimate dimensional flexibility if the developer had proposed over 30% open space, which they had. So they were able to meet the open space requirements at the minimum of a one-to-one ratio of upland to wetland. And then there was additional land that they had that they couldn't develop anyway, primarily consisted of wetlands, so it was in and above, above and beyond the 30% requirement. And it's just merely a matter of the regulations that require the open space dedication in order to achieve the dimensional flexibility. in order to achieve the dimensional flexibility that they did use and apply in this subdivision.
And so what would be the potential number of homes that could be built in that area?
The overall parcel was roughly ninety acres. The area was zoned R forty, so the underlying zoning district would allow for approximately ninety homes in terms of density.
But now that can't happen.
Correct, you're only going to get twenty homes and a new town road at cul-de-sacs adjacent to seventy acres of open space. I'll also note that there was one lot that will not reside, or doesn't reside on the proposed road. It actually fronts on Green Valley Lakes Road. The developer is looking to convey that to the town of Old Lime because it abuts their landfill. The builder didn't want to acquire that portion of land.
It abuts Old Lime?
The Old Lime landfill, yes.
But isn't Green Valley Lakes where that is?
Yeah, the frontage of the lot, the rear portion of the lot is where it abuts the landfill.
Oh, okay, all right, got it.
And you can see though, you can see on the map?
Yep.
The road.
Yes.
Yep. All right, any further discussion?
I will abstain from the vote as I live in that neighborhood.
Understood. Okay. So.
I'll make a motion.
Do you hear a motion?
All right, move the following. Whereas, said approval by East Line Planning Commission included the dedication of approximately sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine acres of open space, and a conservation easement is more particularly described herein. Whereas, the planning commission favorably recommends the town accept as more particularly described in a deed and related documents pertaining to the open space, two parcels of land. The first piece or parcel of land shown and designated as quote, open space A, area equals eight hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred and sixty-six square feet, which is twenty point five five nine acres. On a map entitled Record Resubdivision Map, Twin Valley, Twenty-three Lot COD Resubdivision, Prepared for Real Estate Services of Connecticut, Inc., Green Valley Lake Road, Map fourteen point zero, Lot forty-five, East Line, Connecticut, Date, March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, Scale, one inch equals forty feet, Sheet one of seven with revisions through September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, Prepared by Bennett and Smilas Associates, Inc., Which map is on file in the East Line Town Clerk's Office, to which map reference is hereby made and may be had for a more particular description and location of said premises. Whereas, the planning commission favorably recommends the town accept as more particularly described in a deed and related documents pertaining to the open space, Two Parcels of Land, The first piece or parcel of land shown and designated as open space B, Area equals two million fifty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-two square feet, Forty-seven point two eight acres. On a map entitled Record Resubdivision Map, Twin Valley, Twenty-three Lot COD Resubdivision, Prepared for Real Estate Services of Connecticut, Inc., Green Valley Lake Road, Map fourteen point zero, Lot forty-five, East Line, Connecticut, Date, March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, Scale, one inch equals forty feet, Sheet two of seven with revisions through September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, Prepared by Bennett and Smilas Associates, Inc., Which map is on file in the East Line Town Clerk's Office, To which map reference is hereby made and may be had for a more particular description and location of said premises. Whereas, open space parcel B is conveyed subject together with an access easement over land to be conveyed to the homeowners association to be created as part of said resubdivision approval, Location of which land is shown on Sheet one of seven of said map, Purposes valued at approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. Whereas, the planning commission favorably recommends the town accept as more particularly described in an easement deed and related documents pertaining to the conservation easement. The conservation easement shown and designated as quote, twenty-five feet conservation easement, Parentheses, TYP, on a map entitled Record Resubdivision Map, Twin Valley, Twenty-three dash, lot COD Resubdivision, Prepared for Real Estate Service of Connecticut, Inc., Green Valley Lake Road, Map fourteen point zero, Lot forty-five, East Line, Connecticut, Date, March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, One inch equals forty feet, Sheet one, And seven of seven with revisions through September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, Prepared by Bennett and Smilas Associates, Inc., Which map is on file in the East Line Town Clerk's Office, To which map reference is hereby made and may be had for a more particular description and location of said premises. Be it is resolved, the East Line Board of Selectmen hereby accepts the land designated as quote, open space A, Approximately twenty thousand five hundred and fifty-nine acres, and open space B, approximately...
Oh, it's twenty point five five nine, not twenty thousand.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Okay, is open space A, approximately twenty point five five nine acres, and open space B, approximately forty-seven point two eight acres, Is shown on the approved subdivision plans referenced above upon conveyance of said land and purchases together with all necessary easements to the town of East Line, and also accepts the conservation easement identified as the quote, twenty-five conservation easement on the approved subdivision plans referenced above.
Okay. All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I have one question.
Yeah.
Gary, what is the property that's going to be given to Old Lime? If you could just point to the map.
Sure. Because you said that about their landfill, correct?
Correct, it should be on your last sheet.
Yep.
Is that one-off parcel, lot, lot twenty-five? It's roughly three point one four acres. Mr. Fusari.
Is that East Line property now, Old Lime property?
That parcel is in East Line.
So just technicality is that you can't increase a landfill unless you buy property that's already next to it now. So could they increase the size of their landfill by having that piece of property?
I would say it's not a permitted use in the zone.
Okay.
What if it's their town, they could rezone?
No, it's our town.
But we're giving it to them though, right?
No, we don't, the developer still retains lot twenty-five, Mr. Fusari still retains that. I believe he's in negotiations and looking to convey it to the town of Old Lime.
So.
Which, I, I think the rationale was that in terms of trying to get a house on there, the groundwater might be an issue. So to, I guess, protect their own interest, the town of Old Lime would be interested in acquiring that parcel.
Because it's so close to the landfill.
Because it's exactly adjacent to their landfill.
They don't want the liability.
Sure.
Maybe you want to grow the mansion.
So the developer who purchased the other, you know, nineteen lots didn't want that liability.
But they wouldn't be able to expand the landfill onto that lot which would actually encroach into...
East Line.
Right.
Correct, I don't believe they would because it wouldn't be permitted in the zone.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a question.
That, and we approved it as a single-family building lot.
So it says here, notwithstanding the foregoing, the grantor and grantee deem the following specific uses and activities to be consistent with said statutory use restrictions for conservation purposes. And one of them talks about access by motorized vehicles from abutting land of the sportsman's club over uplands for retrieval of a wounded animal which may wander into the open space. So I'm not really sure how the sportsmen's clubs work. I mean, will they be shooting like on their property and it will be, like if somebody's wandering on the open space, could somebody get hit? I, I, I don't know anything about shooting or guns, but...
In regards to that, there's laws that govern the discharge of a firearm within roughly, I think it's five hundred feet, correct, from home gentleman? Of a single-family dwelling. So with homes located on the proposed road?
Okay.
There's going to be a buffer there that's required. Now granted, there's seventy acres of open space, I think which adequately provide that buffer.
Okay.
Well, we know that the members of the sportsman's club will occasionally hunt on their own property. That's permitted use by right.
Yep.
So I, I, you know, I can't promise that there's no hazard, but as a result of that, but at the same time, I, I think it's highly unlikely. The elevation is significantly different. You know, the, the planning commission did, I believe, intended for public access to it.
The sportsman's club is already there on the other side of that land.
Correct.
And they're already able to do whatever they're permitted to do on that land.
Correct.
And so what we're talking about is a conservation easement that will encumber the open space that the town is receiving. And as part of that easement, it's saying, hey, look, you know, if there's a wounded animal that wanders into the land, we'll, we'll at least allow them to go in and retrieve it with a, you know, ATV or whatever it is. For, you know.
And they wouldn't necessarily have to call us to get that permission.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay.
You know, there is a small dirt road in that area that leads into more of a footpath that leads into one of the historic cemetery.
Yes, that's lot twenty-five.
Right, and so members going in tend to the cemetery would still have access to that. And they do also park on the side of that little dirt road that leads into it.
Correct, so as part of the subdivision approval, that was noted. So whoever acquires, buys lot twenty-five would have to purchase it with that encumbrance, that there's an easement for people to pass and repass to access the cemetery.
That's Bayberry Lane, I believe, right? That's the unapproved road?
Yes, correct.
That accesses that twenty-five.
And it's really, it's really not a road.
Yes, it's not a, not a town, approved town road.
No.
Paper.
Paper, paper street. Any further discussion? We have a pending motion that's been seconded. If there isn't any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one abstention, correct?
Yes.
Roseanne, okay.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Thank you, Gary, appreciate it. All right, next on our agenda is to schedule a public hearing for updates to the following ordinances. The first being the youth and family, youth, family and human services ordinance limiting the maximum number of voting members. Okay, so, do we have?
All right. It's one motion, okay, so we're going to just do all of them, okay.
For, for the, for the building permit fees as well?
All three of them, yeah.
Okay, so we have three, three things pending, building permit fees, and then zoning fees for geographic, GIS system fees.
Okay, all right. So I'll make the motion, move the following. Town of East Line Board of Selectmen, notice of public hearing regarding the following ordinances entitled, Quote, ordinance establishing a youth family and human services commission, Amending to clarify membership capped at seven members. Ordinance establishing fees for building and demolition permits, amending to revise building fees. Ordinance establishing zoning fees for geographic information system, GIS, Amen to add fee per certification. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the East Line Board of Selectmen at seven PM on Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at the East Line Town Hall, One oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyanac, Connecticut, To consider amendments to the following ordinances entitled, Ordinance establishing a youth family and human services commission, Ordinance establishing fees for building and demolition permits, And ordinance establishing zoning fees for geographic information system. Copies of the full text of the proposed ordinances are on file for public inspection at the office of the East Line Town Clerk, One oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyanac, Connecticut, And at www.eeltownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at East Line, Connecticut, on this fifth day of March, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. All right, do we have a second? Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Next is the bond resolution for the town hall modifications for the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA.
Are you good, you keep going?
Yeah, I'm okay. Thank you. Resolve that the resolution entitled, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating Five Hundred and Fifty Thousand for the planning, design, construction, and improvements to the town hall and authorizing the issuance of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriations impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached here too, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at meeting.
Do I hear a second? Any, any discussion? Being none? I'm sorry.
I'll second.
I think, I thought it was Kansas, yeah. Okay, any discussion? If there's none, all in favor signify by saying...
Wait, can I, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
It says recommended for approval by the Board of Finance, is that?
Yeah, so you guys are going to recommend to them to approve as well, to them to town meeting?
Okay, got it, thank you, I just wanted to make sure we had it right. Okay, I'm good.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, the motion carries. Next is discussion of possible, let's see, no, I'm sorry, next is a bond resolution for East Line High School Aquatic Center roof.
Resolve that the resolution entitled, quote, Resolution Amending Various Resolutions, Including, one, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating Seven Million Two Hundred and Eighty-five Thousand Dollars for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of seven million two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Two, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating Three Million Seven Hundred and Thirty-five Thousand Dollars for various public improvements and authorizing the issuance of three million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Three, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating One Million One Hundred and Thirty Thousand Dollars for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of one million one hundred and thirty thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. And four, Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating One Million One Hundred and Eighty Thousand Dollars for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of one million one hundred and eighty thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached here too, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at town meeting.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. They already did F, which was moved to...
Thank you for staying so late, guys.
Pardon me?
I said thank you to them for staying so late.
Yes, thank you.
See you next week, same time.
Okay.
So this then goes to the Board of Finance, correct, and then they...
Yeah. All right, discussion of possible action to adopt a capital asset policy. So, did you want to address that, Kevin, or?
I think I'm the man for the job.
All right, we're ready, let's do it.
We've been waiting all night for this, Kevin.
What is this?
Capital asset policy.
Do we, is it on the list? Am I missing?
Yep, it's G. We skip over F, discussion of possible action.
I don't have G.
I don't have a G. Which is fine, I just didn't know what it is, so what is it?
You want...
I don't have an H either.
Can you just tell me what you do?
Yep, she's going to get, hold on, we've got some.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I think...
Oh, there's an H too?
No.
Oh, I didn't even notice, okay.
Okay.
All right, does everyone have a copy of this policy? I printed extras.
Yeah. We haven't, we haven't actually voted on it yet, so.
It's here. Yep. Okay.
Okay, there we go.
I have, yeah, I have the most.
Do I have a...
Yeah, this should be in your...
Okay, okay.
So let's, all right.
So if everyone has a copy of our proposed capital asset policy, this was a, one of the recommendations for, during our audit. So Mike Popham, I know he watches these meetings, so he loves... so he loves a good shout out. So, and I told him his, his, his right hand there, Brandon, I give him a shout out too, but, so see, Brandon, I did add you. Okay, so the capital asset policy, the town currently does not have a capital asset policy, so we're just going to kind of put some parameters and guidelines around what we consider a capital asset versus just a normal operating expenditure. So this breaks down and defines the various capital assets, the threshold of $5,000, how we identify and track our fixed assets. We're going to be using the SAGE fixed asset software, we split that with the Board of Ed. And there is a second.
Kevin, I don't think everybody has a copy of the capital asset policy. You want, I have mine right here.
They should be over there, I printed a bunch.
Okay.
It's a single, it's double sided.
I didn't realize you guys were so interested in this policy.
What's it look like, I guess?
It looks like it says, I have it all in my packet.
Yep, it's on the backside, it starts on the backside of the packet.
Okay.
I don't have it, I'm sorry, thank you.
I'm sorry, Kevin.
You're fine, you're fine. I'll go right back through the list.
So it's on, it's on both sides?
Correct. And there's also, Sandy, there's a second, there's like a, a schedule of depreciable years, you see it right to the right of it?
Yeah.
Perfect. Appreciate you.
Oh.
Poor Sandy.
Narcos.
Yeah, I don't know. Oh, so this is permanent, thank you.
She says she can read that.
Thank you, Sandy. She can.
I can read it with my glasses on.
Okay, we'll get back to it, thank you.
Okay, all right, so everyone has the policy in front of them, so what we're looking to do is establish guidelines, just to, for the town's fixed assets, right? So this just clearly defines what we are going to be, we define as a capital asset in town, the threshold for the capital assets, how we identify them, the system we're using, depreciating methods, we're gonna use the straight line depreciation method, attached.
Can I stop you for a sec? Do we have a capital asset policy currently?
Not that I could find.
No, this is he's.
So, if we vote on this tonight in the affirmative, it effectively becomes our policy going forward and we can, it's invaluable, like, we can't change it unless we bring this back from?
We can change it next meeting.
Yes, not nor.
Yeah, but it's gotta become before the board.
My question is, we're about to vote on a budget.
Yes.
And I could foresee us getting handcuffed by this vote. That would not happen?
Nope, nope, so this doesn't, this is merely an accounting policy. This doesn't, this doesn't limit our budget, this is just saying, okay, if we, we put a new road down, how are we, how are we handling the accounting of the road? Are we putting it on our balance sheet as a depreciable asset, or do we write it off as an operating expense?
Okay, so just to satisfy my brain here, if we vote in the affirmative of this, that will not make any of our capital improvement plan as it stands right now problematic?
No, nope.
Joe, I, I have a question.
Okay.
Just, I just forgot it, give me one second. Was this something that the auditors wanted you to have?
The policy, yes. This particular policy, Mitch Nixon, the deputy, and myself crafted this.
Okay, but the auditors, when they see this, this is gonna make them smile, basically?
Mike, you better smile tomorrow on the phone call. Yes, this should, this should make him smile.
So no, this is something that they would encourage, in other words?
Yeah, oh yeah, they're, they're recommending we put a policy around this.
Okay, perfect, that's what I wanted to know.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Yeah, no, 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 I just.
So, and there is a, so there is kind of a little breakdown here of, of what's a capital asset versus an operating expenditure, right? So when you talk about chip sealing or crack sealing, so if, if you're cracking, or crack sealing a part of the road, that's considered routine maintenance. If you chip seal or crack seal the entire road and you're extending the useful life of that road, that it becomes a depreciable, a depreciable asset, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So it's just, it's just how it's handled, so we just need a policy to differentiate between the two of those and just kind of outline our capital, capital assets.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, no, go ahead.
We saw that in our deliberations on the CIP plan, where we took computers and made them operating expenses.
Correct.
As opposed to capital items.
Correct.
So, is it better to have more capital items, or is it, so you can depreciate it, or is it better to have it, you know what I mean?
I don't think for a town, there, it's better, so to speak. If we were, you know, a for-profit entity, right, if we were a, a mom and pop, you know, construction company, right, think about if you, you just bought a $500,000 excavator, you're, you're not really allowed to write that excavator off in one year, you've gotta depreciate that. What we're doing is just defining our depreciation method and what can be depreciated, right? Because right now, it's kind of like, okay, well, let's throw that in, let's throw that in, there's no clear definition of this. So really, this is just trying, trying to create a framework for what to?
So right now, there's, it's basically, you just pick what you think it is.
Yeah, I mean, this is very similar to what we're doing now, so we use a $5,000 threshold now, and, you know, the same kind of, is this an operating or a capital expense? We, we work on, you know, every item, essentially, we go down the list and.
Okay, but this clarifies it.
This, yeah, defines it and outlines.
Okay, got it, yep.
Because they don't have a policy right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Now we have something to look to.
Really, what this does is, the auditor looks at the policy, and then looks at the list and says, oh, you violated the policy, or you're, you're an adherent to the policy. But right now, there's nothing to check it against.
Okay.
Right? Except, you know, GASB and FASB and.
So it's another area that we're trying to.
Yeah, no, it's good, that's why I just wanted to make it clear, yep.
And then with, attached to this is a list of the, like, capital assets and the depreciation and the useful life of those assets. So it's just a way of just finding, okay, if we're putting a new road in, how are we depreciating that road?
As an artist, I'm curious, how did you calculate?
Those are.
The useful life of artwork as being five to seven years?
That, okay, so the useful life, we poached from another town, and I believe that comes from the GFOA best practice list, so, you know, you know.
Artist timeless.
I don't know about the fix, the, the art piece there.
I appreciate it, but that's another issue, all right.
I don't think we have any art, so we're not too worried about that.
Well, we, we have the painting at the end of the hall.
That's it.
Oh, I don't know if that's on our insurance register.
Okay, thank you.
That was donated, we didn't buy it, so it's not on our capital asset list.
That's true.
Okay.
So.
That's all I got, that's it.
Any questions?
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion, move to approve the Town of East Line Capital Asset Policy as presented by the Finance Director.
Do I hear a second?
One second.
All, any discussion, any additional discussion? Not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being done, motion carries. Thank you, Kevin, for that explanation.
Thanks.
Your work on putting that together, that's great. One more thing. Discussion of possible action, approval of MOA, memorandum of agreement, for the East Line Police Local Number 2852, Council Four, AFL-CIO. And this is, let's see, handle that up here.
This guy, right?
Yeah, I'll make two. Here we go, yep. Okay, so, in reviewing, in reviewing the charter, the ordinance creating the police commission, and the East Line Police Union contract, there were inconsistencies in the language between those three documents. In some places, they used Board of Selectmen, some places they used First Selectmen, and the contract was not consistent with the ordinance which created the police department, which created the police commission. So, references to the First Selectmen or the Board of Selectmen really should have been the police commission. So, we wanna get this done, and so every doc, all the documents are consistent, and there's clear language, no ambiguities with who has authority to affect discipline, make decision on, on the, the staff of the police department. So, this change makes, makes those three documents consistent with one another. And so, if you look at the section where it says shall be changed to, where does that start?
Page seven?
Yeah, page seven, so we'll just, yeah, so we'll start with. Article, well, article five, oh, page six, so, it says, yeah, I'll just read through some of it. So, the town has and will continue to retain, whether exercised or not, all the rights, powers, and authority heretofore had by it, and except where such rights, powers, and authority are specifically relinquished. On page six. Yeah, right down here.
There's a lot here.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna try and give you some examples.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see, average or limited by the provisions of the agreement, it shall have the sole and unquestioned great responsibility and prerogative of management of the affairs of the town. In direction of the working force included by limited to, subject to the applicable general Connecticut general statutes and any town charter ordinance, this agreement shall be exclusive controlling authority. So, let me just point out in a few places, if we look at the bottom of page seven, in Article Eight, Section Eight Point Four, it says, where the Chief of Police proposes to implement discipline greater than or equal to three days, suspension, and up to including discharge, the police commission shall, before discipline is imposed. So that used to say, I believe, the First Selectmen. So, it's, it's substituting the police commission for various places where it'd be referred to the First Selectmen or the Board of Selectmen, and really, all those decisions, now that we have a police commission, their contract should reflect police commission and not the Board of Selectmen. So, what this does is it goes through the union contract and substitutes the authority of the police commission in those places where it was inconsistent, and really should have been changed when they adopted the new union agreement, and it just apparently was overlooked. So this corrects that, and so if in the future, the police commission needs to act, there won't be any confusion as to who has authority to take steps that are necessary with their police department. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, and it's. Where do you come in, though, Dan? Do you come in to this at all, equation, or is it? No, it's, it's really, I mean, you know, the way we're set up, it's the police commission that, you know, really has the authority over the, over the police department, and that's how our ordinance reads. But the contract with the police was never corrected to reflect how the ordinance is set up that created the police commission. So we want the ordinance to be consistent with the, the police union contract.
Is that routine, is it routine?
Is what routine?
Uh, for the police commission to have full reign over?
Well, that's how we set it up.
That's how it was set up.
Yeah, so that's what the, we're not changing the ordinance. That ordinance is in place, it was voted on, and that was, and it's consistent with the Connecticut statute. So you have to have a police commission if you're gonna have a police department. That's by state statute. So, we wanted to make sure that we are consistent with both the state statute, our charter, the ordinance creating the police commission, which hired the police department, all those pieces have to work together. And the, the final step, when they created the police department, to go through the police contract and take out references to the Board of Selectmen or the First Selectmen, that was never done.
Okay.
And it should have been done.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
So who oversees the actual commission? So, just hypothetically speaking, say a problem arises, who is the watchdog of the commission?
The Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And that's by charter.
I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure.
So the charter, I mean, it's not easily done, it's, I mean, there is a process, and, you know, you can't just do it out of whim, but.
Correct.
There is a procedure that is addressed in the charter.
Yeah.
And that's what we, as the Board of Selectmen, would have to rely on.
Okay.
To take steps with the police commission.
Okay, so the Selectmen Board, but not solely the First Selectmen?
Not, it would be the Board. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
So, I have a question. It says, the town and union are parties to the collective bargaining agreement. Going forward, the town and union are still gonna be parties to that agreement?
Yes, oh yeah, so we're not, the, the agreement is still in place.
Okay.
This is really just a corrective measure to correct.
Okay.
The.
Yeah.
The.
Yep.
References to Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
First Selectmen, where that, those references shouldn't have been had.
I understand.
And it would only, if there's ever a situation, it would only cause confusion, and we wanna resolve that.
Yeah. Got it.
Okay, so.
I have a question.
Yep.
So, this MOA is kind of like a miniature negotiation. So, just for the record, is it, the police union has agreed to these changes as well?
So, the procedure is that they've already agreed to this.
Okay.
It was, you would have to say negotiated, but it was figured out and agreed to by our attorneys and their attorneys.
Okay.
To get this straight, so we, we can operate in a streamlined way here, consistent way. And it was agreed to by them, they voted on it, they're waiting for you to authorize me to be able to sign this. And then tomorrow morning, if, if I'm given that authority, I will sign it, and the police union, the police union will sign it. And then that will be, that'll be the new agreement.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, is there any, are there any other questions? I'll do my best to.
One, one please.
Yes.
Fall along with what the ladies are saying here, that when it comes to negotiate our next contract, when it runs, you're involved, being, writing the checks.
So, the next union contract will be the, the head of the union, I will, if it's me, I, I will be there, our attorneys will be there, and, you know, there'll be ground rules to govern those negotiations. Right, but, we're not doing, that, this is just, we have an existing contract, it's signed up for negotiation yet.
Gotcha.
This is just to correct the existing, so that's why it's an MOA, memorandum of understanding agreement.
All right.
All right.
Ready?
Yeah.
All right. Resolve that the First Selectmen is hereby authorized to execute the name and on behalf of the town, a memorandum of agreement between the Town of East Line and the East Line Police Local Number 2852, Council Four, AFSCME, AFL-CIO.
All right, do I hear a second?
One second.
We'll give, we'll give this one to Jason this time. All right, so, any further discussion or questions? Hopefully I can answer. All right, if not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And, any abstentions? Being done, motion carries. All right, we are going to jump back into, oh, we have one more, we have to, we have an approval. Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, cool. Approving, because we have aye, right?
Appointed to historic properties?
Yep.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Okay, move to appoint Betsy Getch of one, of 18 Hillwood, Hillwood Drive, East Line, to the Historic Properties Commission.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Candace. Any discussion?
Yes. I've been thinking about this off and on during our discussions tonight, because the Historic Properties Commission oversees all of the historic entities in town. And as Betsy wrote in her request, she says that she would like to be on the commission so that she can represent the Samuel Smith Homestead. But we don't give that right to all of the other historic properties members, so, meaning of, you know, like the, some of our other historic homes. So should we instead make Betsy an ex officio?
I guess, when I was on the historic properties, there were certain people who were on the commission, and certain people were in charge of certain houses, basically, and they would kind of go around and say, okay, this is what's going on at Brookside, this is what's going on at the other one. Is that what you're talking about, Roseanne?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I, I just think that, you know, the different commissioners on the Historic Properties Commission, they're kind of a, you know, they kind of branch out and do their own thing, and then they come together and discuss, you know, each different property. own thing. And then they come together and discuss, you know, each different property. So I don't think there is a conflict to put her on the Historic Properties Commission. She would probably just, when she got on, it'd say, I'm most interested in, you know, dealing with this property.
Who's ex officio is that currently?
I think it's, um, Historic Properties Commission. Is that J C?
Are you?
No, it's me.
Jason, are you the ex officio for Historic Properties Commission?
Uh, I am not.
I just said that I am.
Oh.
I said I would.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Your head was down. Yeah. So it's Candace. I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
I can't hear.
It's, it's a long night.
So, I mean, did she want to be on the commission?
Yes, that's her request.
Well, I mean, she wants to be on the Historic Properties Commission.
Right, but she's stating that she wants to be on there specifically to represent the Samuel Smith.
So she would be a voice that would, you know, be pro Samuel Smith houses. They don't have a separate commission.
If she'd like to be the ex officio, I'd be more than happy to allow her. It's, it's fine.
I mean, what do you say? Cause you're, you go, you go to the meetings, like, don't they all kind of separate and talk about the individual houses?
Individual houses. It's not just, you know, one property that they speak to. So.
I mean, I, I don't have any objection to debate that. Well, why don't we, any other, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't see it as, I don't see it as a problem.
I know, neither.
So do we, any further discussion or concerns, Roseanne?
To include her expiration date. It doesn't have an expiration date. Can you amend your motion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, understood.
Roseanne, would you feel better if, if it was stated that she was an ex officio party?
No, if everyone else is in agreement. I don't have the list of the members there, but it concerned me that she specifically wants to be on there to represent one specific entity. But I think it's.
Well, maybe once she gets there, she'll, she'll figure it out. Yeah, figure it out in broader scope and take an interest in other building stuff.
Okay.
So I, I do need to amend the motion, so I'm just gonna amend it and to, I did not include the term. And her term will expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight. So this one. Oh, she's an alternate? Okay. All right. All right. We'll do this again.
You start over.
Move to, sorry.
This is the hardest thing we did all night.
Budget's gonna be a breeze after this.
Move to appoint Betsy Getch as an alternate to the Historic Properties Commission. She lives at eighteen Hillwood Drive, Eastline, Connecticut, with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right, we have another, we have two. What's that? The two J?
Uh, two J.
Is there another one?
Budget deliberations.
All right, so now we're gonna move to budget deliberations. What's that?
Oh, nothing.
Okay. So, um, so I think, go ahead. Yeah, we have, yeah, we're gonna, we'll turn to that and we'll, we'll try to take the ones, people that are here that might have an interest to speak to us first. Okay.
We're going back to.
So we're gonna go to.
Services to the community?
Services to the community. Yep.
Oh, yeah. If you wanna pass that back.
Okay, so we have, I know we have some interested people in the audience, so we should probably maybe address those first, to see. Okay. So first on the list, on our list, is the Brian Dagel Foundation. I see Mr. Dagel here. I don't know how you wanna approach this. Do we wanna just go through each one and suggest amounts, or?
Well, do you wanna go through the policy first and approve it?
Yeah, that would be, that might make some sense. Thank you. Thank you, Candace. Okay. So we've, we've proposed a policy. I, I prepared this policy and, I don't know if we have to vote on it or not. I suppose we should.
I don't think so.
Well, just as sort of informal, but, so it's, it's a, it's a procedure regarding allocations to services to community applicants. Do you want me just to read through it?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. The town of Eastline, budget section one fifteen provides for an annual amount to be allocated to various non-governmental entities that contribute services to and promote the well-being of the residents of Eastline. In, in the interest of transparency and accountability, the board of selectmen adopts the following principles and procedures to be followed in the allocation of financial support to the subject entities. Number one, entities requesting a contribution from the services to community budget allocation must submit the services to the community funding request form by January thirty-first each year for the upcoming budget deliberations and submission to the Board of Finance. Two, board of selectmen members shall review the community funding request form submitted by the various applicants. Three, the board of selectmen shall take up the applicant's requests during their budget deliberation, deliberations meetings and deliberate first on whether an applicant should receive an allocation. And if so, the specific amount to be awarded to the individual applicant. The board of selectmen may request a presentation by the applicant if a majority of the members of the board believe it is necessary to make an informed assessment with respect to a particular applicant. Five, the board of selectmen may choose to utilize a scoring sheet to assist in its deliberations. However, this is not mandatory. And I have included a proposed scoring sheet if you wanna use it. Six, the board of selectmen shall vote on a final schedule of allocations to the applicants that will be incorporated into the final town budget for approval. The total contributions may not exceed the total for section one fifteen as proposed by the board of selectmen. Then attached to that, I do have a scoring sheet if you wanna use it. It helps, you know, in going through it.
Can I make a statement or?
Yeah, of course.
So I, I spent a lot of time thinking this over. And I think it's really easy to get into the details really quickly and start comparing criteria and ranking criteria. I just wanted to kind of put out two big ideas. One, we're gonna spend a lot of time on this. And it, it represents less than one half of one percent of the overall budget, even if it was fully funded at all their requests. So this, this is a lot of money, the taxpayer money that we're, they're dealing with. But I don't want us to lose scope that these services do provide, or these organizations provide services. And it's really not that big an amount of savings if we cut one way or the other. The other thing I wanted to keep in mind is whatever we decide to use tonight as our screening tool, and if we permit, you know, hopefully these, these people to speak, I think we have to keep in mind that there are other people who are not prepared to speak or who are not here tonight. And we can't diminish their, their need and their request just because they weren't in the room to, to pipe up. And as, you know, someone sitting on his board, you make decisions about what's in front of you. You make decisions about who's speaking and how the emotional appeal goes. And I just wanna make sure, like, say Futures is not here tonight, they can't make an appeal in person. So it would be unfair if we gave weight to someone else who was here in the room over Save Futures. So.
I agree. And we did have a number of people here tonight who, at this point, after sitting here from five-thirty, who, who left. And their input would have been helpful. But here again, we didn't, we didn't make it point, pardon, fast point that we'd like to have people come. So.
We were told five-thirty. We were, got a message on Monday, maybe here at five-thirty.
I think we are kind of figuring this out as we go along because this is so new. So I apologize. And I appreciate you sticking it out here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to contribute to the conversation.
And I think the idea was, you know, if someone wanted to come, it was certainly optional. We're, we're gonna rely, for the most part, on, you know, we do, there was an application process. You know, everyone that abided by that, they're here, they're represented. And I, I don't want anyone to feel that they're disadvantaged because they're not here to, to speak to us tonight. So.
I spent all day Sunday reviewing these, looking at them, figuring out numbers of what I thought was appropriate. So even if somebody came, you know, I don't think it would really change my, my thoughts. It might add more. Did you have more information? But, you know, I've already spent the required time that I think is necessary on it. So I, even if somebody isn't here, you know, I've done my due diligence.
That being said, we do have people here. Is the board okay if, if they wish to speak?
Yeah, why don't we look them, address, so they can leave and, so, yeah. Go ahead. You're, I'm sorry. You're from Karen Shear?
Barbara.
Yeah. Okay. Did you wanna address us again? I know you spoke earlier and.
Dan, I would just like to say, one real quick. Next year, I think we should just move that up to December thirty-first, just because your bud, your budget is due. And then the board of selectmen budget's just in, in an effort for time if we just shuffle that forward a year, a month.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Welcome, Barbara. Thank you for being so.
Thanks. So far, Camiker.
Sorry, it's such a long night.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't understand. I thought you needed some information and, okay. It actually was yesterday morning that we got the email. I misspoke about Monday. So anyway. Thank you. I am Assistant Secretary of Karen Shear. My name is Barbara Camiker. I live here in Niantic. I've been volunteering for two years. I've learned a lot about this community organization that's celebrated thirty-five years. It's actually, now we're in our thirty-sixth year. Our main project is the food pantry, but this particular application is for another program we have, which is almost thirty percent of our budget. It's called Designated Assistance. And that's where we give money directly to landlords and electric companies for recurring monthly expenses. The people have to meet certain financial criteria. And we have a budget this year of sixty thousand dollars, helping thirty-eight households. And we're asking for three thousand dollars to go into that budget. Do you have questions? I mean, obviously, people need help.
Yeah.
You know, we're doing our best. It's really overwhelming. Just for your information, besides the three hundred phone calls a month we get, we're feeding, just this is, in the pantry, over three hundred people a month come to our pantry. And they're, they're only allowed to come once a month. So they come, and that has been increasing twenty percent a year for the past five years. So we have numbers from April of twenty twenty when we had a total of one hundred and thirty-one people. And that six-month average back then in the twenty, early twenty twenties was a hundred and fifty-three people. We're up to average of three hundred and eighteen people a month. It's a big difference. And, you know, we're started writing grants. So this is, we're just beginning our second year of writing grants and trying to keep that. And we're certainly very appreciative of all the contributions everybody in the community is making to help support these people. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your.
I see Bill Bundy here. Bill, were you, wait, you're outside?
He's just here for the show.
All right. I mean, I didn't know if there's any questions. All right, I didn't, okay. All right. I didn't wanna hold you up. Okay. Mr. Dagel.
Paul Dagel, the Vice President of the Brian Dagel Foundation, Five Riverhead Lane, Eastline. I did not come here to make a presentation tonight. I came here in case you had any questions. And I did have an alternative purpose, which was to walk down memory lane for my time on the board. But based on the conversation you've had, this policy has merits, but it takes time. And I would certainly think you'd wanna start it earlier than receiving something in January. Cause get it out of the way before you get into the town's budget. It's a small amount of money. It's important money. Don't get me wrong. These agencies need it. But I don't even know what your budget is for one fifteen this year. If anyone would like to share it, that'd be great, just so I know what we're up against. It could be close, I'm sure it's closer to the eighteen thousand from last year than it is to the fifty-six thousand for this year. So do the best you can. And thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll amend the policy next year. We'll make it, that's kinda a little bit complicated. Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
For Mr. Dagel. I, I see on the report, it says, I think, I, I just wanna make sure it's a typo. It says, are you a not-for-profit? And you selected no. But I found, I think you're, you're a not-for-profit, correct?
I know.
Okay. Yeah, I found your nine ninety. I found your nine ninety. So I think you're a not-for-profit. No, on the, on the list it said no. So I just wanted to make sure to, so the box was checked. Are you a not-for-profit?
Yeah.
I get you. I get, okay, you know, I get you. Okay. All right. So I just wanted to double check for everyone.
I caught that too. And there's another one. The Veterans Council is not, not a not-for-profit.
Yeah. Yeah, because you already read it. Yeah.
Veteran might not actually form a not-for-profit. I'm not sure. Yeah.
Are you not a non, non-profit?
So do we, but we, this isn't on the agenda though, is it? Oh, yeah, it is.
So we're gonna vote on that first.
Yeah, we're gonna amend the policy. Instead of the date to submit the, the request, we should make it December thirty-first for the upcoming, okay. So we'll just make it December thirty-first. Would that one change on? Can I hear a motion?
I'm not reading the whole thing again.
No, just, just a motion to accept the.
Sorry. Move to amend the date in the allocations to services, the community procedure policy. Number one, to say the community funding request form by December thirty-first instead of January thirty-first.
I'll second.
Okay. And can we amend the mo, the motion just say to adopt this as our, our policy?
Oh, and to adopt this as our policy.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I see.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. We have one opposition. And any extensions? All right, the motion carries. Okay, so now, how do we wanna approach this? Do we wanna just go through each?
Well, I had, I had a couple philosophical things. I tend to be a big-picture thinker. And I saw three options, kind of how we do this. I'd, I'd, I'd like to just hear what you guys have to say.
Yeah.
The first one would be, well, last year, the Board of Finance cut it. It came back to us and we had to decide how to fund these guys. And we funded them at a percentage of the amount that was initially asked for. We could do that approach again. So our budget is approximately twenty-five thousand, and these total fifty-seven thousand. We could say, okay, we have about forty-four percent of the total money budgeted. So we could give each of these forty-four percent of what they asked for. However, that's kind of a pittance for some of these, like Shoreline Soup kitchens asking for five hundred bucks. That's like, okay, here's two, two hundred dollars. So that is one way of doing it. The other way is we just say, yes, we will fully fund all these requests, understanding that this is really a small item in a very large budget. And since we're not really being, we're not really, we don't have our act together. It's kind of unfortunate that some groups might suffer and some citizens might suffer because we just didn't have the policies adopted at the appropriate timeline. Nothing against any of us or any of the work that anyone's doing. Just the timing has been kind of erratic with this. We're getting better. But perhaps this year, we should say, all these are granted, moving forward. So those are the two I saw. And then the third, of course, is to say, no, those are not good ideas. We should go through each one and, and give it some amount of money. Which I'm sure the group will want to adopt the third policy. But I just wanted to put out there that there's two other options before we even get into the line-by-line stuff that should be considered.
Okay.
I guess the way I looked at it was, I looked at the basic necessities of life. And because of that, I thought of shelter as number one and food number two. So those were my two priorities. And I tried to fund those first. And then I kind of did the other ones. So that, that was how I did it. Because, you know, people need. So that was how I did it, because, you know, people need shelter and they need food.
So you would be into prioritizing these and going.
That's how I did it. I looked through them all and I was like, how, what was the most important thing to me? I mean, first thing, you need a place to live and you need to eat. So that's how I saw it. And then, you know, I kind of did it from there. But, you know, however other people want to do it, it's fine with me.
I took kind of, I don't want to interrupt. Pardon me?
I said I coughed and then I said, excuse me.
So I took a little bit different approach, kind of maybe blends the two approaches. So I looked at, you know, we sort of earmarked twenty-five thousand to get this done. And so I looked at the numbers and, you know, they're all, you know, two thousand, three thousand, one thousand. And I thought, but there was one that was larger than the rest. And that was the United Community and Family Services. They were looking for twenty-one thousand. So I thought, the approach I took was, let's give everybody what they were looking for, with the exception of the United Community Family Services. And we take the difference between what's left and the twenty-five thousand and give it to them. So I came up with about four thousand and fifty for United Community Family Services and then.
Wait, how much?
I don't know how many.
So.
I didn't think you could do.
I did everybody, well, because New London Hospitality Center, that got taken out, right?
No, it didn't.
No.
So if everyone, Dan, just real quick, I have the list in front of everybody here from the last three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have it. That was five thousand in New London Hospitality.
Why did we have?
So this Vet Center should be taken out, this Vets Council, is that in your budget?
Yeah, no, that's already out.
I just highlighted it because it was there.
That would transfer to the first selection.
So down to fifty-three thousand.
So Thames Valley Community TVCCA, that's still in?
Yeah, that's two thousand.
Yep.
We marked something last, what were we?
The marks are right here. So the Vets Council, the Veteran Rev, the East Line Cemeteries and Historical Society. It's the paper you have in front of you guys. And the only thing I would just, you know, maybe a suggestion, is if you're going to do it based on the requests and people find out about that, the requests jump in value. So should you put a cap on it, maybe like two hundred percent of the prior year or something like that?
I asked for fifteen thousand.
Because, I mean, I could see it instead of, you know.
I think there should just be a max of like asking per maybe fifteen hundred dollars. Because the whole, the whole process itself started with, I guess, one ask so many, so many years ago. At least that's my recollection of it from what Roseanne had given us a kind of a history, right? And then it just continued to multiply, right? And then you're now thirty years, fifty years, whatever, and it's like up to sixty thousand dollars. And that was my first year being on the board and I'm like, what is going on? How do you make the list? What is, how does this work? And then Ann had brought up the question, you know, about money and about us, you know, essentially, right? Gifting taxpayer money, like what does that look like? Then fast forward, you get a budget and they're cutting it because there's no policy. So policy, yes, then requests, right? You're going to start getting into requests from, so I'll use, I'll use Pollinator Pathways. They do incredible work and Marjorie is a wonderful woman. She's wealth of knowledge. I believe, and again, I'm going on memory, I want to say that the request maybe was like fifteen hundred dollars, maybe?
It was three thousand.
The first time, or no? That's for this, that I'm looking at in front of me, right?
Yeah, for what?
Yes. Right, so I'm going back a year.
Oh, you're going back a year, okay.
I'm going back a year. So, I mean, I don't believe it was three thousand, because then when I saw it, I'm like, okay, we need to kind of max and put a max on what the request could be, because now we're up to five thousand. And what is it going to be, six or seven thousand next year? So, you know, maybe putting a cap on the request at maybe fifteen hundred dollars. Is, I'm just going to throw that out there. I mean, it certainly workable, but, and see what other people are thinking.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
So I just had a conversation with the Director of the Homeless Hospitality Center, just kind of informally. I said the Board of Selecting was considering this, but I was not speaking on behalf of the board or anything, just to get information. And they receive funds from all different towns that they service. And Waterford paid fifteen thousand, Groton paid twenty-five thousand, we paid one thousand one hundred last year. This year they're asking for five thousand.
Right.
So maybe, I guess, what, go where you're going with this, Candace, if we put a cap on this particular way of doing things, that that request would have to go somewhere else, because other towns are contributing a lot more. Perhaps that's a request that doesn't belong in this budget.
Well, for the Homeless Hospitality Center, we're required, right?
Yeah, that's, well.
There's a requirement.
Actually, I spoke with the Director and I said, is that a requirement? And she reluctantly said, no, it is not.
I had ours next. Those are required now.
Is it writing?
That's what I did. All right, that's what I screwed up.
Well, when you say it's not required, we have our people use those facilities.
Right, right.
To me, that seems, when other communities are contributing, we need to do our part.
Agreed.
And we should be helping, but the amount that other towns are, that's a lot.
If I may, on our request sheet, the Hospitality Center marked no versus required under the law.
None of them asked, checked required.
I was looking at the dollar amounts, not going to lie.
None of them said it's required, because if it was required, I think we'd have to budget it elsewhere.
Okay, okay, okay. So does anybody else have any thoughts on, on like, or no?
Candace, I think this was your idea. So I took the number of not-for-profits on this list, it was twenty. I backed up the four that we've moved, we're left with sixteen. If we take the twenty-five thousand divided by sixteen, that's roughly fifteen sixty-three, if it was equally divided amongst everybody.
That's another way of doing it.
How much is it?
Fifteen sixty-three. By the sixteen left. Because there was a few, so when I tidied this out, just so everyone knows, I did not receive anything from the Southeast Cultural Coalition and then the East Line Student Government Scholarship, I did not receive anything for those two.
Well, some are, like Safe Futures only asked for a thousand, Shoreline Soup Kitchen asked for five hundred. And what was the other one? There was, I think, everybody else. Brian Dagel asked for a thousand.
So perhaps instead of just giving with caps and policy right now, maybe we should just wade into the details and see if anybody has a workable solution. Like Kevin's put forward a proposal. I know we all have kind of gone through this. Do you want to go that route now and shuffle our cards and see how it falls out?
You said fifteen sixty-three per?
Fifteen sixty-three, yeah, fifteen sixty-two fifty.
And that's, and that's how much, that's spending the twenty-five?
That's spending the twenty-five, but I mean, if other, if other agencies, like the Shoreline Soup Kitchen asked for five hundred, if we put the five hundred, that's a thousand sixty-two for another not-for-profit or somewhere else to go, right?
Yeah.
So maybe if the ones who are, are less than that amount.
Right.
Maybe you give that to the Homeless Hospitality Center, the shelter.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I like that idea. It seems to be cleaner, right, like.
Yeah.
So let me see if I understand what you're saying.
Then next year, there'll be nobody asking for less than average.
You would take then, so what was the amount again?
Are you doing all the math, Kevin?
I'm, well, I'm just trying to, like, in this BOS approved column, so the ones that are less than the proposed amount, I'm going to just kind of slide over here, see what that amount is.
I was going to do it by hand, but you have a spreadsheet, so.
I'm just going to grade these out, so we don't have to talk about.
Safe Futures, that gives us five sixty-three.
So, yeah, everything else I would put in the.
So that is, that is an equal way of doing it. It is not equitable. And I know equity is kind of a bad rap in politics these days, but, I mean, police cadets, they, their focus is primarily summer camps. And like you said, that is not necessarily an essential. Do we want to give them the same amount of money that we give, you know, United Community and Family Services who asked for twenty-one grand? You get a thousand dollars, like the police cadets do.
Twenty-one thousand dollars, that's, that's just medical stuff. That's for people, people have Medicare, Medicaid, they have insurance. So like, the fact that they're asking for twenty-one thousand dollars, I mean, most of my clients go through UCFS. And so I didn't really understand that one. I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, and that's the ones out of line with the rest, obviously.
Yeah, I just was like.
But the larger question is, do we prioritize by need there? Because, I mean, I don't know.
I guess I would prioritize the, the.
So Kevin's worked out a system and it seems like it's going to work, but I just want to know if we want to go that way or if we're going to just say, no, this is a greater priority because this is a matter of life and death versus this, which is a matter of, you know, Main Street beautification.
You know, I think, I mean, the ones that are really essential in some way. I mean, the New London Homeless Hospitality Center, I think that would be deserving of, if, if we do, you know, fifteen sixty-three to everybody that had requested more than that, that's what they get. And then someone that's requested less, we take that difference and we, we assign it to the New London Homeless Hospitality Center. I think that to me sounds like a pretty good approach and, and we're setting that one as, as the key priority, I guess.
I like that. I would vote for that proposal.
Dan?
Yes.
Could you tell me you moved the Student Government Scholarship to the budget?
They never submitted it.
We did not move that scholarship.
We did not.
We did move that scholarship.
Just the vet stuff.
Just wanted to let everyone know. If we want to move it, we can move it. You can vote on it, we can move it, but we did not move it. It's still.
It's not on this list, though.
It's, they didn't give us paperwork, but it is on the spreadsheet I provided at the bottom.
It is.
Oh, I'm only looking at.
The right-hand column?
Oh, no, I'm looking at something totally different.
I didn't get a proposal, but I'm assuming they get the thousand dollars a year, so I just think. I don't want to shortchange our budget a thousand bucks.
So Veterans Council was moved to my budget. Veterans, and then both the Veterans things were moved to my budget. Cemeteries are moved to historic properties. We got the note on the side, okay.
East Line Beautification, is that?
No, so the reason you're seeing that is, that's what we funded in the prior years? That's just so I could tie it out? That is no longer, that is all.
Okay, because I didn't have that on my list, okay. Veterans Council is out.
The Veterans Council is out because it got moved.
And the East Line Cemeteries isn't in here anymore, right?
That got moved to historic properties.
East Line Historical Society, that's out.
Yeah, so it's right there on this.
Oh, all right, got it.
All right, can I just kind of work through this little spreadsheet here? So I did an if-then safe statement, so I'm really proud of this little formula. So if it is less than the allotted, you know, per not-for-profit amount of the fifteen sixty-three, it'll populate that number. If it is more than that, it populates the fifteen sixty-three. At the end, we can see we have sixty-seven hundred eighty-eight dollars left of that twenty-five thousand on proposed budget. Keep in mind, that number can change as well, right? You guys can vote to change that number as well, so just, you know, so, do we like this? I can, and then we just kind of override the.
So we could allocate that if we wanted to New London Homeless Hospitality Center.
Or, you know, also Karen Shear, who's up here saying that fifteen volunteers are handling three hundred calls a month for, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, those are two that.
Two key ones, yeah. Let's check their bank account.
What'd you say? Oh, so you don't want to.
I don't, I still think we go down the list and handle these individually, you know? I mean, not, not tonight, but.
We got to do it.
We got to do it.
Why don't we just allocate to bulk them out for charity and, and then.
I mean, these are all five oh one C threes.
Let me ask you, Kevin, if we just give a bottom line for our budget, do we have to allocate these tonight?
Um, no, last year we didn't. Last year the Board of Selecting, the Board of Finance cut it to a number and then.
Came back.
Afterwards, outside the budget process, we allocated that eighteen thousand and change roughly.
So, so we could just agree on a number. Let's say it's the twenty-five thousand. And then we can take another stab at this, is that?
So wait, so we, we vote on the, the amount, then it goes to the Board of Finance and then whatever the Board of Finance, after the Board of Finance makes their, their, whatever they're going to do there. Give me a word.
We could give them some coaching, some guidance, but for the.
Their decision, then we move forward with the allocation.
Yeah, so either we could do it like this way, so we, we have this little spreadsheet with the numbers tied out.
We could show it to them, you know.
Or we just say, okay, you know, we're going to, the board allocates twenty-five thousand for this line to be approved at a later date, right? And that doesn't have that approval to spend that money, since it's already an aligned item called Services to the Community, it doesn't have to go before the Board of Finance, because it's not being allocated to multiple lines. It's just how you are approving the expenditure of that particular line.
So we could do that.
Outside of, yeah, you could, you could have an extra, a special meeting just for this and break it down.
And we don't have to have the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance doesn't have to approve it?
Well, they eventually have to approve the budget and the dollar amount, but not.
The line, not the list.
So we can sidestep all the nitpicking tonight by just saying we approved twenty-five grand.
The only downside from it is that, well, there's actually not a, there's, there's a, there's a negative and possibly a positive. So by doing that, all of these people that are kind of waiting, they're not going to have any type of dollar amount in their mind. But if we were to do it, then we might have a redo of last year where they did have a dollar amount in their mind and then we had to go back and change that.
That's true.
One proposal is.
Historically, they've been lying items and that's what they've seen, received. And they've cut some, some years and other years they reduced. Last year it was a year, of course, and they did. So I'm not saying that's, that's not a good idea, just be prepared to ask questions, or are you going to spend twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, he's right. We should just go through this. Let's just do it.
I'm up for doing it. Let's just do it. You want to go line by line?
Yeah.
Let's go.
All right, so we have twenty-five thousand though, so we need to.
Keep a tally.
So, yeah.
I got the tally right here, column gene.
Okay, so as we throw out numbers, you can, you'll be able to plug them in?
Yep, yep.
Do we make a motion for every single thing here?
Let's see what we can figure out.
I think we can vote on the whole, the whole kit and caboodle.
Yeah, let's see what we can do. I had it all.
All right, so you have some priorities and why don't you kick it off?
All right, I had New London Homeless Hospitality Center for five thousand. I had, do you want me to go through what I had? I have it all listed out.
Yeah, why don't you go through your numbers? We'll go through Ken's numbers.
All right.
Homeless Hospitality was how many?
All right, I'll just go from the top.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so I've got the Blue Door Foundation, I gave twenty-five hundred. Karen Share, I gave twenty-five hundred. Giving Garden, twenty-five hundred. New London Hospitality Center, five thousand. Nyantic Main Street, twenty-five hundred. Police Cadets, two thousand. Pollinator Pathways, fifteen hundred. Safe Futures, one thousand. Sexual Assault Crisis Center, six fifty. Shoreline Soup Kitchen, five hundred. Thames Valley TVCCA, one thousand. UCFS, two thousand. Brian Dagel Foundation, one thousand. Did I make five thousand, twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five, six fifty.
Okay, so, I was close. So, I guess I'd have to shave off six fifty from somewhere.
You're off six fifty, okay. Would you give the TDC? Yeah, I kind of, I think.
Why don't we just do this at the start?
Who did you give, would you give TVCCA?
I gave them one thousand.
All right, so, so we're, we're, how far off on your list?
Six fifty.
We, we have to take away six fifty from somewhere?
Or you can add six fifty to that budget line.
No, we'll take away somewhere.
Once again, I would, I would put out there that the police cadets, although it was a very worthy endeavor, they're going to use the money for summer camps.
All right, so take it then, what's, I can't do math.
Thirteen fifty.
All right, thirteen fifty for the police cadets.
I think that's a pretty good list. I couldn't do much better.
So what does the police cadets end up with?
Thirteen fifty.
All right, does somebody else have ideas or agree, disagree?
Well, let's, we'll start. Don, do you have any adjustments to that, that you'd like to see different? Or, are you satisfied?
Uh, no, I, I'm fine, thank you. I, I just, but, see, I gotta be careful here, I just.
No.
Well, look.
Say what you like.
Just say what you are, I just, you know.
From, from what I hear, and I, I, I donate to Care and Share, but they've got plenty of money in the bank.
Okay.
And we can help them, they can come to us, they need, I mean, that's why I like a bank, you know, it's when it's, when they come to say, I need a hand, you know? But, but they're huge, they're huge. I don't wanna deflate them, and their attitude and stuff like that, too. I mean, they do such a good job.
They do a great job.
I'm amazed at how many people are certified there, so leave it alone, leave it alone.
So you wanna leave it alone, or you wanna?
Yeah, leave it, leave it, leave it alone.
Okay.
Hi Candace, how do you feel about it?
I don't have any disagreements on any of the numbers that were thrown out, to be honest with you.
The police cadets, by the way, do a lot more than camp. They, they do a lot of training.
I mean, I feel like it's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, the police cadets, they do, they do a tremendous amount, um, but I think that these extra amount, uh, because they're, they're asking for five.
Forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred.
Almost five thousand, so forty-eight hundred, and it's considerable. I w- I wanna say that, um, you know, I can't remember what they got, or what the request was in twenty twenty-four. It was either fifteen hundred or tri- or three thousand, I can't remember what it was.
Twenty-five hundred.
It was twenty-five hundred, thank you for that. Um. I mean, I think that it's fair with the amount of money that we're kind of working with.
Yeah.
Cause I would like to see them, you know, get something, because they will, you know, use it to their use. They absolutely will.
Yeah.
So if you look at their actual application, they do it line by line. They want forty-eight thousand, uh, sorry, forty-eight hundred, but, line one is summer camp for four youth is thirty, thirty-two hundred. Summer camp for two police advisors is sixteen hundred. So it looks, looks to me like they're just spending this exclusively on six people going to camp.
Correct.
Is that the, um, I'm, I'm wondering if that's the police camp that they send the kids to?
So.
It must be.
Yeah.
How much is it for two? The sixteen hundred, what's that?
Well, that was for the, 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 the police supervisors, counselors.
I mean, I'm, I'm all for kids going to camp, but we're.
Sixteen hundred a piece for all six?
What's that?
No, it was sixteen hundred for the.
I didn't know that was what it's for. I didn't, I didn't see the app. I didn't know that was what it's for. I, I'm looking, I was thinking of the training they have every month, every week. No, I see that.
Yeah, no, no, it's just.
Just about eight hundred a kid, then. Eight hundred a person.
Yeah.
So, do you wanna make it sixteen hundred, so two kids can go, and then we'll just take, uh, what's the difference? Five hundred from somewhere else?
Two hundred fifty is the difference.
Two hundred fifty, okay, so if we make it sixteen hundred, so two kids can go.
Is that what it was for two kids?
It's eight hundred and.
It says summer camp times two police advisors, so I don't even think that's the kids, I think that's the advisors. So, if we're gonna do two kids, that, oh yeah, that would be sixteen hundred. Yes.
Okay.
All right, sixteen hundred.
And then we have to.
Then you gotta take two fifty some, from somewhere else.
Here you go, we volunteered. Take it.
Oh.
Really?
You're one of them, Mr. Dago.
You okay with that?
For the kids.
All right, seven fifty.
All right, seven fifty. Thank you.
You gathered ass for this one?
You're a good man.
Thank you.
Many years ago by the Board of Finance, after I was on the Board of Selectmen, I wasn't there, and I accused myself of approving the final budget. We use the money, it goes to a good cause, I think you all know that.
Yeah, of course.
Not gonna have us shut the doors.
Yeah.
I keep working no matter what.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Well, that's generous of you, thank you. All right, let's, let's.
Yeah.
All right.
You want that NICD B?
Is there, can you play other comments? Roseanne, do you have any comments on the list I had?
Yeah, I say we, I say we put a fork in this.
This has turned into a massive nightmare for something that was pretty simple.
Well, yeah, yeah, we're good, we're good at that.
Let's not forget that it took us years to get to this budget.
Okay, so.
Took us years to get here.
All right, so we go with that one?
We did it.
We did it, yeah?
Somebody make a motion. I motioned nothing.
But what, what did I motion?
Um, move to adopt the, uh.
All right, hang on, I don't, yeah, just.
The table is prepared this evening to the Board of Selectmen.
I don't need to reread it, right? Okay, I'll just move to adopt the, um, funds as previously discussed to the services to the community.
One second.
You have a second. Any further discussion? There is none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we got that done.
Yep.
Are they big budget?
Yeah, I mean, all right, so do we have any other changes to the big budget? Do we have the bottom line?
Good night, Paul, thank you again.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
All right, we need to approve departmental transfers?
Oh, yeah, that's.
Oh, 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 we're still on this budget.
Oh, we're still on this budget?
We gotta get this budget approved.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Yeah, and then move it on to the Board of Finance for next week.
Oh, oh, all right.
So I just wanna touch on a few things.
Yep.
So with the adoption of Ms. Vitacleano's updated depreciation schedule, we have to update the value of one mil of a grand list, uh, uh, one value, the value of a mil, right? So we did that, this is the updated value. So if we scroll down, we can see when we started over a three mil increase, we're down to two six two now. So we're under ten percent. However, there's still some things we can do here. I know it's still very high. But, uh, so, I worked with the, um, one of the tax collectors, Mrs. Rolf, today, and I pulled the, we pulled the last four years of tax data to see if our collection rate at ninety-eight point two is, is too low or too high.
Oh, yeah, that's a big.
Okay, so the fiscal year twenty-two, it was ninety-nine point one eight. Fiscal twenty-three, it was ninety-nine point one four. Last year, it was ninety-nine point two six. This current year, we're already at ninety-eight point one eight. So we are almost already at the ninety-eight point two. I recommend to at least move that up to ninety-eight point five, if not ninety-eight point seven five, and, um, to, to reduce the, the mil rate and increase the collection rate. Does that make sense to everybody?
Is that something we do, or the Board of Finance does?
I think you can still give it to, I think you have the power to do this, yeah.
We can do it? Okay, all right, cause I just remember doing it on the Board of Finance.
I think the Board of Finance has the last, you know, last bite of the apple, but I think you guys can for sure do this as well.
And, and what would you recommend, then? Because.
So I think ninety-eight point one is, uh, ninety-eight point two is very conservative. I think even conservatively is ninety-eight point five. Ninety-nine would be pushing, you know, right up against the door, but ninety-eight and a half, I think ninety-eight point seven five, I, I think those are all reasonable. So I, you wanna see what the, what it does to our mil rate here, if we just move it up? So if we do ninety-eight point five, everyone, if you look at the two point six two.
Yeah.
Over here.
Got it.
So if we move it to ninety-eight point five, it drops it about a tenth of a mil.
Wow.
If we go up to ninety-eight point seven five.
Some people are gonna pay their taxes, huh?
Under two and a half mils.
Let's do it.
Yeah, ninety-eight point seven five.
Okay.
Which, which, that's the one, what, what are the mils for that?
The, the mils for this is about two and a half, so it's still about two and a half mil increase. It's under twenty-nine mils. It's a two point four six mil increase.
I like that. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Well, considering that we, we have so many uncertainties with what's happening at the federal level, have we got enough of a cushion here, if we lose funding or things?
There is no cushion. Our cushion is a three, we have a three hundred thousand our contingency and a ninety-eight million dollar budget. So if there's, if we lose any funding, we will, um, you know, either be dipping into fund balance or supplemental billing at some point. But, I mean, we do have, you know, eleven million dollars in grants. Um, of that, though, let's, let's visit, uh, revenue real quick. Education cost sharing is the big nugget right here. And we're, you know, uh, tuition's three million dollars from, uh, other school districts, and there's various other, um, you know, pilot, payment in lieu of taxes for the prison.
Among the other things being said at the national level, there's been discussion of, you know, dismantling the Board of Ed, which one of its chief priorities is allocating.
The funds.
Grant funds.
Yep.
So, it's not beyond the realm of possibility that that money, that nugget, as you call it, uh, might be in play.
And how much, how much is that nugget?
So this, the education cost sharing is, uh, six million dollars. So that represents about two and a half mils. Right, so if we just, you know, just wanna show you, if we take this away, six, seven, seven, six, five, oh, seven. Looking at it, it was a four and a half mil, over a four and a half mil increase.
What is the timing? We don't have a timing as to if, or when that would occur, though, I mean, I don't think we can.
Completely chaotic.
Yeah, I, 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 you know.
I think that would be, I mean.
Yeah, I, I, I think if something happens, we deal with it then, I mean, I.
I don't think any municipality is gonna be scratching their head at that.
Roseanne has been sounding this alone, the whole budgeting process, though.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and I agree with her, but.
But, but we have to budget with what we got now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's federal dollars, I think that's state dollars.
I think we gotta hope for the best and.
Should we, should we go back to making a motion on the twenty-eight point seven, or ninety-eight point seven five? Or do you wanna make a proposal?
All right, are we ready for the motion?
Yes, ninety-eight point seven five, though.
All right, what, I don't.
Make a motion to increase the collection rate from ninety-eight point two to ninety-eight point seven five.
Okay, thank you. All right, I move to, um, increase the collection rate from ninety-eight point two to ninety-eight point seven five.
I see that.
Wait a second.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
The other thing is, if anything changes, too, then, you know, Board of, Board of Finance is gonna have their.
All the way through April.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So we'll. We need to change it, you got my number.
Technologies changing.
Okay, any other suggestions?
I mean, just so everyone knows, the, the state grants aren't finalized yet.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so, I mean, this is all subject to change.
Yeah, no, I understood.
When you look at the number of people in our area that are employed, or jobs that are paid for by the federal government.
Yeah.
And a lot of those people live in our town. We got the sub days, we got a lot of businesses here that depend on federal banks.
Any other suggestions tonight, uh?
So if everyone's good with the budget, we just need a vote on the final dollar amount, ninety-eight million, three ninety-one, two fifty-two. Do we wanna just go through everything again, or what are your thoughts?
I think we're good.
Show me, show me your way to go home.
Does anyone else wanna go through it? Anything else? I mean, we've been, I think, through it pretty thoroughly. Does anyone wanna make a motion?
All right, that's general government, correct?
I, I think the motion is to, um, approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating budget as presented. Uh, uh, the operating budget of ninety-eight million, three ninety-one, two fifty-two, and forward to the Board of Finance.
Okay.
All right. This is fiscal year twenty.
Twenty-six.
Twenty.
And then we have to do the capital after this.
Okay, I'll move, uh, for the fiscal year twenty-six operating budget in the amount of ninety-eight million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars and forward to the Board of Finance.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
You have a second. All right, any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. We got a budget to go to the Board of Finance.
Got it, slam dunk.
Now I have to do the capital improvement.
Okay.
You know, we've been through that pretty thoroughly, so.
Yeah, I feel so good about that.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time on that, yeah.
I really, I really do, yeah.
Yeah, so I.
Yeah, I do, too.
That should be clear.
The only thing, just so the board knows, there still might be, um, an adjustment to that tax collector security hardening line there. Once we get the, the quote for the cameras, but that'll be at the Board of Finance.
Is that the ten grand one for the tax collector?
Correct, yeah, I think that's gonna encompass, um, security hardening for Town Hall.
Security guard for ten grand?
Top, uh, security hardening.
Hardening.
Hardening. No security guards. Um, so, okay, so for this, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, capital projects, seven million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
All right, I'll move for fiscal, uh, fiscal year twenty-six for capital projects in the amount of seven million, six hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, and forward to the Board of Finance.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
What's that?
I'll second it.
You have a second, okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good job on, on that, fantastic.
Anything else?
Yep, last one.
Yep.
The ten-year CIP, um, in the amount of one hundred and nine million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, I'll move for fiscal year twenty-six, a ten-year CIP in the amount of one hundred nine million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, and forward to the Board of Finance.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think none, motion carries. All right, we did it.
Okay, wait.
Departmental transfers now.
Yeah, we have, so we want to, we want to table that, or we have to?
No, no, we gotta get this done.
Yeah.
I need, we need this, cause this has to go to the Board of Finance next week.
Yeah, 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 all right.
Sleep is for the weak.
Lot going on here.